Here. Director Hockert.
Here.
Director Kelsenberg.
Here.
Director Lowers.
Here.
Director Parker. Director Thielander.
Here.
Chair Sherman.
Here.
You have a call.
Great. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Can I get a second?
A second?
Great. Dr. Hockert with a second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Agenda passes. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve items A and C. And I'm gonna make a request to pull item B. So can I get a second to approve consent agenda items A and C?
Second.
Great. Director Lowor with a second? Oh. Chris, beat you, Andrew.
It's the delay.
So all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye for items A and C.
Aye.
Great. Really quick, and this is out of order, but for everyone to know at the board table, Andrew is not here. He's, he's out of town and he's patching in, so that's him on the screen. So Andrew, just speak up, because I'm not always gonna look to see if your hand is raised for a question. And then I just really quickly wanna welcome our two student board members here tonight. And just Aurora and Zach, welcome to the board. And we're excited to have you guys here. And feel free, just if you have any comments, to raise your hand and I'll call on you and we'll go from there.
Just, just a reminder. All votes, since we have somebody remote, should be roll call tonight.
Oh, thank you for that reminder. I will need that probably a few times. Okay, and then, yeah, so anyway, I am pulling tonight item.
Do we need to redo? Point of order?
I would suggest you redo the consent. We just.
Oh, you wanna do, even consent needs to be roll call. Okay, let's do roll call for items A and C.
Okay. Director Gursicich?
Yes.
Director Hockert?
Yes.
Director Kelsenberg?
Yes.
Director Lowor?
Yes.
Director Parker?
Yes.
Director Thielander?
Yes.
Chair Sherman?
Yes. Okay, now we'll have item B, and I'm gonna ask Chris to kind of come up here as I'm talking a little bit about it. So the MOU we're approving tonight, which I know I'm greatly in support of, I'm pulling just because it's on our strategic plan. It's a, it's one of our core objectives. It's also a core objective from the state legislature in the form of the REED Act, which I'm sure our community members and everyone here at the board table knows a lot about. And so I wanted to give Chris a chance to kind of walk through the board. Every district can handle this differently, how they comply with the REED Act. And so what we do is different than what other districts do. And so I thought it would be good just to kind of go through for clarity purposes for everyone. And then also, I just wanted to take a couple, this opportunity to thank the state legislature for providing the funding that we're using to comply and to have this MOU, this understanding with the union. So thank you to our state legislators who are supporting the REED Act. I also want to be, express gratitude to both our staff, Chris and her team, and also to our union leadership for their work in getting this MOU agreed upon and done. And just wanted to kind of, again, just go through the details. So if you could maybe just real quickly, high level, kind of walk through the MOU? Great.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Andrew. So the REED Act MOU, it addresses the letter certification training. We, we did select the letters, I think we've all heard about that, the letter certification program. And so the program is estimated to take about 64 hours per volume. And the district administration worked hard to rearrange the PD days in last year's schedule to accommodate all but about 16 hours of that time. So majority then of the time was covered during, during the workday. And then we used the money that the state gave us to divide that out over the folks who were eligible to receive the stipend. So that amount comes out to $480 per volume for a total of $960. Another option for compensation for teachers is credit. So they can get up to six credits per volume, which then can be applied towards a lane change, which is a salary change or a pay increase. So it's up to the teacher to decide if they would prefer to have the credits or if they would prefer to have the stipend. Once the MOU is signed, then I will send out communication to our teachers who have already completed the training and certification or who are in the process to submit, go ahead and submit their vouchers.
Thank you for doing that, for explaining that. And I just, again, I wanna express the gratitude for the work that our teaching and learning team did, who I know some of which are here today, because I think it's a huge lift to have this, the majority of the hours, with the exception of those 16 of the approximately 64. I know those are kind of ballpark estimates. But I, I just think that there was a lot of work done by teaching and learning. So in addition to your team for, and the union for the MOU, just a shout out to our teaching and learning team who really does a lot of good work behind the scenes. And just wanted to recognize that the REED Act is really designed to improve literacy outcomes for students across the state. Again, it's in our strategic plan, and I wanna recognize the teachers' efforts in our district that they're putting in this work to make a positive impact in the lives of our students. So I appreciate that explanation. I don't know if any, if there are any questions on the details, but I just thought I would take a minute to highlight that.
I had two questions on this. One, first question is, thank you for all the hard work on this, and thank you to the union leadership as well. First is the, do we have an estimation of who will take credits and who will take, or not who, a percentage of people that would take credits and people that would take dollars?
I guess I don't have a percentage, but I know about 10 people have elected to take cred, to take credit.
And then, second is on eligibility. I was curious, who's required to do this training in our district?
Pretty much anyone who has a literacy role. This is probably a better question for Caitlin. But it's really anyone who teaches reading as part of their, as part of their job duties. And special ed folks who's, who have students with IEPs, am I hitting it?
You're close. Yes. It's K-5 classroom teachers, all ML or EL licensed teachers, six through 12 grade teachers who teach English Language Arts, interventionists, and special education. That would be special education pre-K through 12 plus.
Thank you all very much.
Great. Perfect. I mean, that's all, I just, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this. Again, thank you to everyone here and many people who aren't here for getting this work done. All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve consent item B. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. Sarah with the second, and now we'll do roll call, Joan.
Director Gursicich?
Yes.
Director Hockert?
Yes.
Director Kelsenberg?
Yes.
Director Lowor?
Yes.
Director Parker?
Yes.
Director Thielander?
Yes.
Chair Sherman?
Yes. Great. Under our business items tonight, we have a report on the boundary guiding change document. So we're gonna have Mark come up.
Good evening, Chair Sherman, members of the board. Tonight's kind of the kickoff to our boundary adjustment process. I'm here to share, to share a draft of the guiding change document that our committee would be working off of. As you know, that we're in the process of building two new schools, a new one in Bayport to a new one in Lake Elmo. And with some of the growth that's been happening in the southern part of our district, it's time to take a look at our boundaries here to see, to set us up for future success in the southern end of the district. So timeline wise of kind of where we're at, so today we're here to review the draft guiding change document. The next meeting is September 30th will be a vote to approve the guiding change document. Over the month of October will be committee work to come up with options for you to review. Then in November, the November 6th meeting will bring an initial draft recommendation here to the board for your review of the boundary change. That following week, we'll have community conversations. We'll go out to the community and get their feedback, as well as get online feedback. Then after the board meeting, after the community conversations and the online feedback, we'll bring the committee back together and then say, okay, here's what we thought when we left committee in October. Here's the comments we got from the board, from the community. Is there any changes that we wanna make based off the feedback we, we have? Sometimes we do make changes, sometimes we don't. And then in December, that first study session will bring the initial final draft to the board. And then the end of December will be a vote for a boundary change. The reason we do this process and have it wrapped up before winter break is because of the January 15th open and alt deadline. So if we do change neighborhoods, we do change boundaries, to give families enough time to, if they want to opt into a different school or go back to the, have a chance to go back to the school that they currently attend, that they can apply and have the same options as other families going into schools for that open and all the roll period for next January 15th. So that's kind of why we wanna wrap it up here in this calendar year, to give families a few months to kind of figure out which way they wanna go for the following year. So with that, any questions on timelines? Otherwise, I'm just kinda digging here to the guiding change document, go through each of these real quickly. And then if you got questions, please feel free to jump in at any point and get more clarification if you'd wish. So I'll kind of start down the current reality. We have a new Bayport and Lake Elmo Elementary opening next fall, 2026. There's an addition and remodel at Oakland currently going on to accommodate current and future growth. We do have growth in the southern part of our district. We have space available in the central and northern elementary schools and Stillwater Middle School. We currently have a feeder system to our middle schools, which means that we have all the elementary kids in a school goes to a specific secondary middle school. For years, we used to have Highway 36 as the dividing line. And there were three schools that actually had kids on both sides of Highway 36. So when they left elementary school, you'd have a portion of your kids going to Oakland and a portion of your kids going to Stillwater Middle. And there's a lot of stress on families and kids. So we try to align true feeders so that the kids that they're with elementary will be in that same cohort as they go on to, to middle school. We do have space set aside for pre-K in all of our schools, and especially with the new schools as well. We'll have more pre-K space next school year. And then currently, from an elementary standpoint, our gifted and talented program is housed at Stillwater Me, Stillwater Middle. And our Amigos Unidos program is housed at Lake Elmo. So now kind of looking at what our desired result would be, first off is make the decisions based on the best interest of all of our kids district wide. We wanna ensure schools in the southern part of our district have the capacity to meet the current and future needs. The difference between this boundary and other boundaries, we're really just gonna focus on three areas. We're gonna focus on the Bayport boundary, the Afton Lakeland boundary, and the Brookview boundary. In past boundaries, we've kind of had more of a district-wide approach to take a look at it holistically. But this school year, there's been quite a bit of change with families, with the start times, with the calendar, with cell phones, some of the other things that we initiated, and we really wanted to keep this as minimal as we can. So from committee work, we're really just gonna focus on those three boundaries and doing some minor adjustments to set up those schools to have the best capacity needs moving forward. We'll consider the demographic makeup of our student body. Gather, gather feedback from various stakeholders, which I've already talked about. We'll provide a safe and efficient transportation system. And then here's the extent possible, middle schools, we wanna keep our middle school feeder together. Sitting here today, I think that's gonna be possible. I don't see us needing to change our middle school feeder program, but that is a desired result to keep it. Also neighborhoods, we want to extend possible, keep neighborhoods together. Now, that doesn't mean as you look on the map and you see neighborhoods are numbered. You know, there's number three and number 15 and number 22 and those sorts of things. It means actual physical neighborhoods of Croywood or Liberty or whatever those neighborhoods are. If there's a, a kind of a neighborhood that makes sense, to try to keep that neighborhood together versus running a boundary right down the middle of the road. And if you live on the east side, you go in one school, and the west side, you go on the other side. We wanna try to keep neighborhoods together as best we can. And then lastly, is we wanna try to set ourselves up to make sure all of our schools have a minimum of 400 student enrollment for all of our seven elementary schools. So, and then lastly, we're not gonna violate any state laws, board policies, or negotiated agreements. And then also, all of our schools will be set up to make sure that their classes will fall within the school board approved class size ranges. So we don't have classrooms that are gonna be above, significantly above any of our buildings moving forward. So that's really kind of a quick overview of the guiding change document. And at this time, I'd kind of open it up to any questions or comments that you may have.
Yes, I have a question for you. I appreciate the clarification on like what schools are really gonna be focused on. In terms of Lake Elmo, I'm sure, I'm assuming that the kids that are currently at Lake Elmo are the ones who will continue to go. You did not mention Rutherford. I remember in those last conversation that there were a number of students from Lake Elmo who got moved to Rutherford. So at this point, my understanding is they're staying at Rutherford. We're keeping, just really focused on the southern schools.
Yep, so the last boundary change was actually two phases. So the northern students that were at Lake Elmo went to Rutherford, and there was a portion of the southern part of the Lake Elmo boundary that went to Brookview. And so now, as we kind of looked at some of our projections over the next five years of where enrollment would be, even with that, that group that went to Rutherford and that group going to Brookview, our Lake Elmo numbers, projection wise, are in kind of the mid 900 range, which for the school is kind of where we want it. And then if we were to talk about moving some of those kids back to Lake Elmo, it would bump the Lake Elmo number up, but also take some significant capacity out of both Rutherford or Brookview, depending which way you go. So to kind of equalize our capacity district wide, we're not gonna focus at Lake Elmo at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And then, cause that was the question I had that I called you about. And if there's room for alternate enrollment, districts in, or families in Lake Elmo could alternate enroll potentially, they obviously wouldn't get transportation, but they could, they could do that?
Correct. And we had families this year that wanted to alternate or open into Lake Elmo that were accepted, so.
Okay, so that does already happen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions?
You mentioned that, is today, do we currently have a feeder program today for our elementary schools? Yes? And going forward, if we're only adjusting the schools in the south, and the schools in the south have the most growth, wouldn't that implicate that, or imply that then Oakland is gonna have a differentiated sized growth compared to Stillwater Middle School? And how does, how do we think about that?
Okay, I'm gonna try to tackle all of them. So if I missed any questions, please feel free to hit me at the end. Let me start the first one. So currently, our middle school feeder setup is, we have Lily Lake, Stonebridge, and Rutherford feed into Stillwater Middle. We have Brookview, Lake Elmo, Anderson, and Afton feed into Oakland. Now, looking at this boundary change, if we're really gonna focus on the Anderson, Afton, Brookview boundary, it really doesn't touch or impact the middle schools, so that's why kind of the feeder would stay. Now, the next part of your question is, looking at long-term with growth. You know, we have, over the last couple of years, we have seen projections where Oakland gets significantly bigger and Stillwater Middle gets smaller. What has happened in reality is our middle schools the last three years have stayed relatively similar in that 900 number. And so even though the projections are different, we have more kids that will go from Oakland and wanna alternate enroll into Stillwater Middle. Or Stillwater Middle will get more kids coming at that transition point, where we talked before, of that fifth gr, or that sixth grade and ninth grade point. So they'll come more at that transition point to even it out. The other point is, when you look at boundaries and you look at capacity, there's a staffing component to it as well. Where you wanna keep the schools around that 950 mark to really maximize and utilize your staffing efficiently. If you get schools that are smaller than that or bigger than that, we can run it. But to do the true housing concept, you wanna keep it around that mid 900s. And so we've had that for the last three, four years, and so we're gonna try to keep that as best we can. Now, moving forward, if we start to see that discrepancy pop up, then we'll have a conversation around our middle schools to really dig in deeper to see what we wanna do moving forward.
I'll try to add on to that. So we have been meeting with a number of communities and people talking about development. There's a lot of potential development on the books that isn't, they've not dug dirt yet and started. Okay, so I think you are going to see eventually a bigger Oakland Middle School than Stillwater Middle. That's why we're adding on to Oakland right now, is because we're adding, I think, 200, capacity for 200 and some more kids, new gymnasium. But what we're doing with this boundary adjustment recommendation is, okay, the new schools are opening, this is kind of step one, all right? We're gonna make the shift for four or five years. And then as these planned developments start to come on board, all right, in five years' time. And this has been pretty typical as far as boundary shifts within the district historically. We're gonna come back and we're gonna revisit it. So we'll be, capacity wise, we'll be pretty balanced over the next few years, but it, it is, there's gonna be a difference down the road. I don't know if that helps or not.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Any other questions? Do you know, just in terms of communication for the community members, and this might not be you, or I don't know who this would be, will there be a space on the website for boundary change with the timeline and the guiding change document or?
Yes, once it's approved, then yes, we'll have a, a boundary change website.
Just so community members can kind of see and follow the process? Perfect. And I just have to say, the process that you have done, I mean, it, it really is so well laid out, Mark. So again, really good job on that, cause it, it's just something that obviously anxiety builds in community members whenever you talk boundary change, so it's a nicely done process. I appreciate that.
You'll have a committee to look at the boundary changes, and I know that that can be very challenging. I've been on that before a number of years ago. What was very encouraging about it, cause everybody that came and spoke up, they wanted to stay in their school. I thought, that's great, they like their school, they wanna stay there. But now we got two new, really fancy schools, people might wanna go there. Actually, that's not even my question, but it's a thought, is how is this committee made up? Who, who's gonna be on the committee or, yeah? Not the parents. We have a parent rep from every school, K through eight, cause we don't have a high school, cause obviously we feed into one high school. And then we have teacher reps, we have principal reps, and we have district administration reps. And then we have a couple of community members on there as well. So it's about a 20, 23 person committee. And how will those be chosen? I imagine there might be a handful of people from each school that wanna be that person. So what we do is, if you're on the before, so if you're on the committee before and your child is still in the same school, so if you were the, I don't pick a school, Rutherford. If you were the Rutherford rep and your kid was a first grader before, and now that they're a fifth grader, you're still in that school, then we ask them if they wanted to do it again. If they wanted to, great, they can still be on it. If they didn't want to, then we'd find somebody else. If they were a fifth grade rep at that time and their child had now aged out and got onto the middle school, then we look at a different rep at that building. So if we do have a handful of people that wanted to stay on and be part of this process again, and then the buildings that didn't have that person still there, then we reached out to the principal to get a couple of names, and then we reached out to those families to see if they're interested. And then next week, we're gonna send out the invite, kind of kicking them off to the process and inviting them to the first meeting, kind of talking about what's gonna happen from their perspective. Okay, cause I think one, one of your guiding principles there is, you know, what's best for the whole district. So if you have a person from a particular school, they might wanna be on that committee to advocate for their particular need. And I would caution that, maybe get some people that don't have that much skin in the game, but can just see that bigger picture and try to do what makes sense. So that's kind of what we talked about first meeting, is yep, you represent a certain building, but that doesn't mean that you advocate for, we're looking at it holistically district wide. And we do have some kind of core tenants of our group that we go through every meeting just to kind of lay out what you're talking about right there. Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, and I will say that committee is made up of some really, I mean, they know our boundaries as well as you, Mark, which says a lot, so I, I appreciate all the effort.
And they'll drive, and we'll talk about a boundary, they're between meetings, they're gonna go drive and say, okay, this road, that road, they're gonna come back and say, I looked at it here. And, you know, they'll count the houses and all that, they, they do a lot of work. It's not just kind of sit and get, that's a very active group.
Yeah. Great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that report. We'll take actionite on that at our next meeting. And then, Mark, why don't I just have you stay up here for this? This is our resolution, this is an action item tonight for renaming Anderson Elementary. Just so you can give the background on it.
Absolutely, so Anderson Elementary, the building was built in 1919. The original name was Bayport Elementary, and it was Bayport Elementary until 1996. In 1996, the St. Paul Foundation gave a grant to remodel and add on to what was Bayport Elementary School. Part of that grant had them change the name from Bayport Elementary to the official name that not many people probably know of Fred C. and Catherine B. Elementary, Anderson Elementary School. And then, so at that time, then the name was changed, and that is changed all the way to today. Now, fast forward to today, when the, the bond referendum passed and we went through the design of the new Bayport Elementary School, we had a lot of community meetings. And the name actually came up in a lot of different areas. And to see what's the name of the school, what's the name of the school? And there was an overwhelming sense from the community that they wanted to go back to Bayport Elementary. So we had conversations with the Anderson family about what their thoughts were. The Anderson family is actually 100% supportive of it. They actually didn't want it changed in the first place, because that's where they went as kids and they really wanted it as Bayport Elementary. The Bayport City Council asked numerous times of what the name is gonna be, because they would like it as a city to go back to Bayport Elementary. So it just was kind of a natural fit for us here as a district with a new building, kind of new beginning, that we will kick off the new school as Bayport Elementary. So we will finish this school year with the official name of Fred C. and Catherine So we will finish this school year with the official name of Fred C. and Catherine B. Anderson Elementary School, but starting July one, two thousand twenty-six, we would rename it to Bayport Elementary and go back to where it was originally.
Great. Thank you for that helpful background. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this. Is there a second? Okay, Director Lauer, we'll do a roll call vote, but right now, there's a motion and a second. Just additional questions or?
Are there any policies that this would be implied that we have to think about in the guidance here that require for naming schools?
We've actually worked with our attorney to draft this resolution to make sure we get all the things done, and then to make sure, gives us time to work with MDE to get all the name changed on all the official documents.
Thank you.
That's why we're doing it now versus waiting.
No selling naming rights, Grand Casino Elementary School, nothing like that? Okay, good, good.
Okay, so now, if there are no other questions, we'll do a roll call vote.
Director Grisovich?
Yes.
Director Hockert?
Yes.
Director Kelsberg?
Yes.
Director Lauer?
Yes.
Director Parker?
Yes.
Director Thielander?
Yes.
Chair Sherman?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that, Mark. Okay, now we're going to move on to tonight's topic, study topic, which is MCA test scores, assessment scores. Welcome. We've got Elsa here to help guide us through her presentation.
I'm going to see if this works this way and stop the screen so we can see Andrew.
All right, good evening, Chair Sherman, directors. Thank you for having me tonight. I get to talk about our MCA and MTOS scores for reading and math this go around. I'm jumping ahead in my presentation here, but science is a new assessment this year, the MCA four. And MDE is currently finishing up their standard setting process, and those scores will be released at the beginning of October. So you might see me here again to talk about science. A few things to remember is that the MCA assessments are designed to measure grade level standards based on the Minnesota academic standards. We really use these at a district level, grade level, school level, to assess how well we are meeting content level standards. And they're just one piece of our assessment system. It's a point in time and can't be used in isolation from other data sources. We're really going to focus on proficiency tonight, so that gives us a one summary point for a whole lot of students. It's important to know that we're not talking about a distribution. It's a yes, no, did you meet this threshold? And there's a wide range of performance under that, versus very close to the threshold or very far from the threshold. However, MCA scores are, MCA content tests are quite different from grade level to grade level. So we're not able to compare scale scores or anything like that, or average scores, to give those measures of central tendency, and that's why we stick to looking at proficiency levels. A couple of words about participation rates. Our participation overall is quite strong at Stillwater. At the middle school levels, we're sitting at ninety-six percent for both math and reading elementary schools. It's even more dramatic. Ninety-nine percent of our third graders are tested each year, ninety-nine percent of fourth graders, and ninety-eight percent of fifth graders. For our high school, participation starts to look a little bit more complicated. Our tenth graders are typically in the building with us. No, not a whole lot of online classes or PSEO, and ninety-three percent of students take that test last year. Math, we start to see a bit of a drop off at eighty-one percent, but that represents a marked improvement relative to two thousand twenty-one, and is pretty high compared to neighboring districts. It's hard to do a lot better than eighty-one percent. The results that we'll see today do not include, they only include students who took the test. When the state uses assessment results for accountability, they count students who are absent or who chose not to take the test as a zero, but that's the only time that that's taken out. So for today, we're really focusing on how did the students who take the test perform, because the majority of our students take that test. This is a tough one to see. You'll have to zoom in a little bit on your screens. But this is just an overall demographic profile of our schools in two thousand twenty-five. This is based off of our October one official numbers. It's hard to describe this without just saying that different schools look different. We have quite a range of demographic profiles in terms of race across our elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as by free and reduced lunch, special education, and multilingual learners. In general, our special education population is relatively evenly distributed, except for specific programs. But free and reduced priced meals varies quite a bit by school, as does our multilingual population. So we're going to go ahead and jump into reading. At the elementary level, our third, fourth, and fifth graders outperformed the state at every grade level by about ten percentage points. And similarly, at the secondary level, outperformed the state by more than ten percentage points, with sixth grade really being the standout at seventy percent. Third and fourth grade are quite consistent compared to last year. We're not back to pre-pandemic levels, but we're getting close. And in particular, third and fourth grader kind of maintaining the growth that they saw last year. Fifth grade is down a bit, which continues the trend from the previous year, so that's something to keep an eye on. When we look at our secondary schools, you'll see a noted jump in sixth grade. That's a ten percentage point jump, which is huge. A six percentage point jump in seventh, three point, three percentage point jump in eighth, and then tenth grade is holding steady after a year of growth the year prior. When we look at cohort level results, we start to see why it's difficult to compare grade levels to grade levels, because they're quite consistent within a grade level versus within a cohort. Especially when you look at the state level, it's very, very stable over time. Another thing to note, as I was doing this report, I was trying to run the numbers back. Those third graders in two thousand twenty-two would have been first graders in two thousand twenty, when the school shut down. And then here is what those cohort trends look like for sixth, seventh, and eighth. Gaps by race, ethnicity group have been persistent before and after the pandemic. Notably, we see that our black students, that's the yellow line, are diverging from the rest of our student group and not seeing the same level of growth. Also to note is that our Latino students, that's the green line, are actually outperforming their pre-pandemic levels. When we look by free and reduced lunch, English language learners, and special education status, we see persistent gaps. One thing to note is that when we talk about English learners here, that's students who are currently identified as English learners. So almost definitionally, they're not yet meeting English language proficiency. When we dive in by school, schools very widely, but cluster around that sixty percent point, with some notable outliers of Afton Lakeland, Anderson, and Brookview. Thank you for updating the slides. And we see the state is at fifty percent. When we look by school trend, we see a couple notable data points. Afton Lakeland showing consistent growth over the past one, two, three, four years, as well as a consistent decline at Brookview. And then we also see some leveling off of growth and kind of returning back to a baseline at Lily Lake and Rutherford. We would expect to see that after a big jump, that it bounces back down a little bit. And it's a good sign that it's not bouncing back down more than we see. When we look at our secondary schools, each school is outperforming the state average. Just a note for the board here, the ALC was omitted from this report because only thirteen students took the exam, and that's such a small sample size that we wouldn't really look at it in this way. Really, the like red letter story here is Oakland Middle School showing massive growth in the past few years. We also see some modest growth at SMS as well, and then the high school holding steady. When we compare ourselves to our neighboring East Metro districts, we're kind of at the top of the pack, not, not the very top, but on the, in second place with our neighbors, and we're showing more consistent growth than our peers. When we look at comparison districts, those are districts who are approximately the same size and approximately the same percentage of free and reduced lunch students. We're closer to the middle of the pack in that low sixties range, but we are still showing more dramatic growth. So we're going to cap off reading before we move to math. Stillwater's MCA and MTOS scores exceed the state average across grade levels in reading, and overall have improved since two thousand twenty-two. It varies a little bit by grade level and by school, but the most recent growth has been driven by the middle school grades. And we continue to see persistent achievement gaps between student groups, with starkest gaps by family income level and race and ethnicity. I'm going to pause there for questions.
We're going to pause just because that's a lot, so we'll go through. Thank you very much for that information. So questions or accounts? Yes?
I was just wondering if you could just help walk through a little bit more the cohort trend? Just looking at, let's see here. So looking at like, you know, sixth grade in two thousand twenty-two, and then the twenty twenty-three number, and then the twenty twenty-four number, they seem to go down. Is there a reason, or is there?
Different test.
Ah, okay.
That's a lot of the reason.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's a, what you'll find out is, it's different in reading and math. Like in reading, help me out, Elsa, the third grade test.
We would consider third grade to be hard and fifth grade to be easy. I mean, that's an overgeneralization, because it's the content level standards. But if we look at the state trends, that's a good way to get an approximation. We see also statewide that fifth grade performance and third grade performance look very different.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah, I noticed that too, yeah. That's helpful. Thank you.
And it's different in math. Like the fifth grade math is a lot harder for our kids, which we'll get into.
So the test is actually kind of a snapshot. It's one test on one day. What was that day that this is referring to?
So it's different by schools. They have different, they have the license to choose. I'm going to do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of such and such week. Mid-April would be the window I'd give you. I believe it was the fourteenth is when we started, and then the following week for math. That's kind of the ballpark. Yeah, the high school starts a little bit earlier relative to the other schools, because they have AP testing season kind of coming, nipping at the heels.
Any other questions?
One question is, when we break out special populations, why don't we break out males and females?
We do have that with, next to race on this slide. We can say that reading is narrowing. There's a bit of a gender gap there between males and females, but that's been narrowing since two thousand twenty-two.
And would that, that's pretty common, wouldn't it be? I mean, is that a, I mean, I noticed it's flipped then for math, where the?
It is fairly common. Our math gap is more dramatic.
Yes.
That's something I'm digging into further. I haven't found a lot of rhyme or reason, but starting to look by grade level, by school, that kind of investigation. But it is a little bit more noticeable than statewide.
I had asked this before in an email, and I think it would just be helpful for the board to hear. You know, obviously, we have a variety of levels of performance on this, and so it is one test, one day, one. But system wide, and maybe, I don't know if this is an Elsa or Dr. Funk, what are some of the causes that you're looking at, you know, in terms of explaining that, or, you know, replicating best practices at one school into another? Or maybe it's just kind of, hey, we're new in having the strategic plan and the pony plan and stay the course. We're moving in a good direction?
So a couple of thoughts on that. So first of all, I want to recognize the fact that we are trending in the right direction, all right? I think I read, I read some news article today. Most every district in the state over the last few years has been going downward. Okay, their scores are, their MCA scores are dropping. So if we're in an environment where everybody's dropping, and ours are actually going up, we're doing some things right. And so, you know, you talked about the MOU tonight, and we've had a lot of people working diligently, hard at letters and improving their instruction. But there's, we're not doing this in isolation. The number you had, we're at the Vessel Breakfast. We have a group of parent volunteers, senior citizens in a lot of cases, volunteers who come in and work with our staff, and they really coordinate through our literacy coordinator. So I think there's a lot of effort there. And I really think that our focus, you know, we talk about our strategic plan and literacy is our focus. Now, a couple, a couple of board members have asked questions over the last couple of days as they reviewed the results. And, you know, one of the questions I got was, why are we so different by building? Okay, and so demographics can be part of it, you know, some, okay, your demographics look a little bit different here than there. That can be a factor. But I think the biggest thing that we can do as a district is something we call a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We have purchased a new literacy curriculum. We're on board, right, onboarding it right now. We have quite a bit of professional development focused towards that. We still have teachers going through the letters process who are getting trained in that. And so I think what you're going to continue to see is an upward trajectory. But it's incumbent upon our building leaders, working with our staff, to focus on best practice and ensure that we are guaranteeing that all of our kids have access to the same curriculum. And I don't know if that's always been the case here. And so I think, short answer, if that's, if we can do that, I think we'll continue to see progress in the, in the right direction.
I will, I was one of those people who asked a few questions. And the one thing I will say is, I'm, I did, I appreciated your reflection back to me to say, I think that a lot of the themes that explain some of these scores were presented to us in our principal updates on the buildings. And so just seeing some of the progress that was done, I mean, we had multiple principals tell us. I'm not, I recognize I'm not able to be the instructional leader I want to be, because I'm pitching in and subbing in classrooms. And I think that some of the stabilization in our pair positions in general, when I look at our hiring, will help, and so I appreciated that comment back, because I think that is important to keep in mind. One other question I have, because I, this has come up, and I remember hearing about this related to our science curriculum. Can you explain, when we implement a new curriculum, like we're implementing it this year, isn't there kind of a trend that you see a little bit of a new curriculum lag? And then it kind of comes up, I mean, when, new curriculum wise, I mean, it's not going to be an instant magic, you know, kind of solution to test scores, but, you know, do you expect?
There potentially could be a lag there, but again, if the curriculum we have, that we've purchased, K five, is aligned to the standards. And I can tell you, the previous curriculum that we had, particularly in four and five, was not aligned to the standards. So I think we are going to continue to see progress. And again, our teachers are working, working hard, and they're doing, they're doing great things. So, but again, it's focus, focus, focus.
And I, I want to acknowledge, I mean, there's so much more. It's, it's almost said that one day is what kind of gets all the attention in the community with the report cards. Because there's so many other assessments that we have that I would argue are more meaningful in demonstrating growth versus proficiency. And growth is certainly just as valuable, so.
Well, and Pete, you asked a question, you know, this is a point in time test. Yes, it is, okay? It's, it's a snapshot of the direction the district is going. But as you've heard previously, over the last few years, we've had Elsa or the principals come up and talk about FastBridge scores, which are our internal indicator on where things are at. So, and I, and I think one of the changes that we have done as a district, I think, since I've been here, is we are more, a lot more focused on what the data looks like. I don't know if we've always been that way previous to my arrival. And so I think if we are making decisions that are informed by data, I think we're, we're better off as a, as a district.
I'm going to jump ahead here to mathematics. And similarly, we are outperforming the state across grade levels. Fourth grade is our strongest here. But you'll notice that that breadth of outperformance is smaller than it was for reading. And then it's much more dramatic at secondary, with over ten points at each grade level. One thing that's interesting to note is that at the state level, as we go from elementary to secondary, scores kind of decline quite steadily. But at our level, we hold really strong in the middle schools. Fourth grade has been very stable since two thousand twenty-two, and seventy percent proficiency is not a bad place to be. Third grade has bounced around a little bit, and then I really do want to highlight that five point jump in fifth grade, because that is one place where there was a lot of intentional work. because that is one place where there was a lot of intentional work. That was a hard-fought five points around curriculum and aligning assessments to the standards. But that's really encouraging to start to see that pay off. It's a mixed bag at secondary with seventh grade and 11th grade maintaining previous year's growth and then some growth in eighth grade and sixth grade, a little bit of a dip. One way that these results get used is that the math departments receive their benchmark reports where they get to dig into which standards did students do well on overall, which students did students not do well on overall, and start to adjust curriculum and weighting accordingly. Last year, we spoke about fifth grade math and sixth grade math and how those intersect and align with each other. We see that fifth grade growth combined with a little bit of a sixth grade dip is narrowing that gap. Obviously, we'd hope for both of those to continue to trend upwards. Typically, third grade is pretty stable, so we see that dip in 2025. But third to fourth grade is typically almost even. We see 67% to 66%. They're more similar assessments and then a drop-off in fifth grade mirrored at the state level. In contrast, when we look at secondary, it's kind of hard to see. But at the state level, there's not much of a difference between sixth grade and seventh grade performance. And in our district, there was, and that difference is steadily narrowing. So, that's a good sign cohort-wise. Our gaps by student group overall tend to be wider in mathematics than in reading, with fairly similar trends. Again, we see growth for Latino students outpacing 2019 here. Our gender gap is flipped with male students outperforming female students and starting to widen. So, that's one to keep an eye on. And then, again, we see widening gaps, particularly for our EL students, which we would hope would not be as affected by the language burden in the mathematics assessment. Each school at elementary is at or above the state average. And then, similarly, at secondary, at or above the state average. We see marked growth at elementary. I want to highlight Afton-Lakeland as well as Anderson over the past three years and starting to see some declines at Lake Elmo and Brookview, but they're not as dramatic as the growth that we see. Stillwater Middle is very, very stable. We're starting to see a little bit of slow and steady growth at OMS. And then, Stillwater High School is really maintaining and slightly improving on their growth from last year.
Yeah, just a quick question. The, these numbers would include the GATE students that are at Stillwater Middle?
Yes, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, not the fourth and fifth.
Yes.
I had Elsa look at that. I think it's about, if you took the GATE kids out, it's about a 7% adjustment down in proficiency.
Okay, thank you, that's exactly.
When we look at our neighboring district, this is again similar to reading, we're kind of second from the top. But we show similar levels of growth to our neighboring districts. We're fairly stable. And for our comparison districts, we're further towards the bottom of the pack. Again, it looks, it's rounding. It looks like more growth on that graph than it is, but it's the difference between 57.5% and 58.2%, so not quite a percentage points worth. Overall, Stillwater's MCA and MTEST scores exceed the state average in math across grade levels and across schools. And our scores have improved since 2022 across our grade levels, kind of varying from year to year and from school to school. And we see those marked achievement gaps by family income level and by race. Just another quick plug, we'll get MCA4 results for science in October. And as we think about those curriculum shifts in ELA, this year will be the first year that we take the new reading assessment, the MCA4 for reading. So, I'll pause there for questions again.
New results in October, and when is that test?
Same time, yep. It's because it's a new test, so that it'll be on a leg as they go through standard setting and determining exactly where is the proficiency cutoff. Essentially, they take all those state results and process them.
Okay.
And we'll, it'll be the same effect for the reading test next fall. We won't have those results until October.
Okay.
Yep, typically, we do reading followed by math followed by science. The science window is a week longer because only fifth grade and eighth grade and high schoolers take it. It's a smaller population.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Sarah?
Well, mine's a little tangential. I was going to ask if you could explain what misperceptions of dispersion are.
From the front?
Yeah.
No, it's okay, I got it. I don't know if I still have this article linked in the slide. I can look it up. It's really great. In general, when we look at a bar graph, we tend to think that it's like chunked. So, if you see the image here, we take the bar graph to stand for the whole group. Whereas, when you average something, that difference in an average might be quite subtle versus where they cluster in that distribution. So, we tend to think that when you look at an average, things are closer together than they are, essentially.
Thank you. Parker, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, actually, I really love that answer. I'm going to nerd out on that a little bit later tonight. So, thank you for that. And also, I'd be really remiss if I didn't apologize for that, missing the gender information here. I really proud of myself on doing, doing the homework thoroughly, and I can't believe I missed that. So, thank you for bringing that up, and I apologize for that. Am I reading the math comparison right, that, thinking about the growth, like, we're going from, like, I think it was 56 to 61, and, is that, no, we're going from 56 to 58. Is that right?
In math, yep.
Okay, so, we're, we're trending up right now. All right.
But slowly.
But slowly, okay. And then, I mean, most of these districts, other than Edina, look like they're trending in the other way other than Farmington?
Yeah, and then what is that middle one? East Carver, I think, as well.
Is it East Carver that's in the middle there?
I think so.
I'm getting East Carver and Farmington.
Yeah, Farmington's in the, in the bottom one.
Got it. So, that's good news for our, for district that we're trending in the positive direction, and it's countered the trend of our comparison districts.
And again, that is with a curriculum that we've had for a number of years. So, I think when we get the opportunity to update, to modernize our MCA math curriculum and onboard it properly, or our new math curriculum, whenever that's coming down the road, that'll be, that will help us as well. Can I ask a question of the students? So, what do you, what's the scoop on MCAs at the high school? It's just, okay, we got to do it. Do we do it? Do we not do it? What's the, okay, here's something that, yeah. What's the general thoughts?
I feel like a lot of people are kind of, don't really like taking it. So, then they just go through the motions but don't try really that hard on it.
Yeah, I agree. And then, also, I feel like it's more of, there's a lot going on with, like, testing, and especially it's like, it was mentioned with AP testing. I know a lot of people are just like, I'm just going to skip through, not try, just get it over with.
What would you think, because we've, we've talked to the legislature about this for a while now, if we were to, like, say, no more MCAs at the high school, and if we want to evaluate kids, we'll use ACT? Okay, next question.
Yeah, it's really tricky.
It sounds like it's, it's general test-taking anxiety. I mean, if it's across the standardized tests and AP tests, and, I mean, it seems like it might be a little bit more, it doesn't matter necessarily what the test is, it's a test. Is that fair or not?
I would say it's fair. I feel like, it's also just like the ACT is more of like, if you want to go to college or if you don't, and then if you're trying really hard to study for it based on what school or whatever you want to go to, and like, what score you're going to get. And maybe the MCA isn't more of like college and like, what you're going to do after high school. So, maybe they're not worried about the MCA as much.
Another thing with the ACT is like, there's tutors for the ACT, and like, those can be expensive. So, I feel like it's kind of unfair to, like, base the school district, like, kind of off that because, like, there's people paying for it and there's people who can't.
Sure.
Good points. Thank you very much.
Probably more of a comment here, and actually, you just said right there, you have tutor for an ACT because there's an incentive. ACT is going to get you the score you need to go into college. That's been my concern since I first became aware of MCAs, is what's the incentive for a student to take that test? Besides just pride in their school or pride in their own score, but it's like, why do the students take the test?
I think you see it much more, and you see it at the secondary level, at the, at the high school. I think, and you can take a look at our participation rates. You know, they're 99% in, in elementary.
And that's to be proud of, right, that we got a high participation, right?
But what you start to see at the high school is the effect of, okay, this test isn't going to help me get into college. This test is, I've got all these other things I have to study for. Why do I care about this test?
Exactly.
So, and that's statewide. I mean, that's just a, and so, I think the impetus with the ACT question was, okay, if the MCA is not important to kids, all right, what if we give them a test that is important to kids? And then, we'll, we'll see, you know, we'll get more realistic results of how our kids are performing. But you're right about the tutor, because some people are going to game the system and, you know, get, get the extra help.
Any other questions or comments? Do MCA tests affect class placement at all in the lower grades? Like, would your score on an MCA test, like, if you get into honors English?
It's a factor in, in GATE.
Oh, for GATE, oh, it does?
It's one of the factors that they look at. But as far as, I think it's probably a factor in accelerated courses too, at the middle school.
I would say broadly, we use fast bridge far more often than we use MCA scores, in part because you get multiple measures. Because MCA is just at one point in time, whereas fast bridge, we can look at the past year's worth of data and see growth over time, and that gives us a fuller picture of students.
Do the students get their individual results after an MCA test? They get to see how they did, and then they make the same comparison, and the staff gets to see the individual results?
They do. So, staff get to see it a little bit early. We're not allowed to release results until after the embargo is lifted at the end of August, but staff have access to it earlier for kind of internal planning use. And then, reports go home to elementary students this Friday. And then, secondary will be a little later just because there's a lot of them. So, it takes longer to fold them and send them out to their classes. But those all go home with students and to their families.
And that, once these results come in, beside, you know, hey, good news, bad news, do teachers, staff, or use that information to inform how they might adjust the classroom teaching?
It's a one data point, but it, it's, the problem with this is the lag time, all right? We take this in the spring, and we just said you're not even going to see the science results till October, all right? And so, it's, it's hard to make curricular decisions on what I'm, on what I'm teaching or what I'm not. But it does help identify strands and gaps, particularly like with fifth grade when we're looking at. Or we saw, I think, with the fourth grade literacy, okay, we had some significant holes in the curriculum we weren't, weren't covering. So, it is helpful in that regard, but we also have the other internal assessments that we use.
I just thought of another question regarding data. Is the data broken down then, like, in the math one? That it might be division versus multiplication or other subtopics in math, science?
The answer is kind of yes and no. The standards aren't always broken down as discreetly as we might like to. So, one standard would be number and operations. That's our strand. And then, within it, you have multiply, divide, add, subtract to X number of place values, and that's all one. So, then, you're not able to dig down into division, multiplication, because both of those are assessed in the same standard. So, yes and no. It sort of depends on how granular each benchmark is.
Okay, thanks. I have one question, it's more for the board. I apologize to make you sit while we have a potential discussion. But I struggle looking at the scores from the different schools and thinking from a governance perspective, what is our role as a board to help improve or to address those gaps? Whether it's a school-to-school gap or population-to-population gap. And I was wondering how other board members are thinking about that from a governance perspective and our role to help support the whole school district.
Georgia Hucker? Glad you brought this up, because I was having the same thought process with this rather interesting lines of our different elementary schools in particular. The way I'm kind of approaching it is looking at what Dr. Funk was talking about, is what kind of structures can we put in place in terms of investing in curriculum, making sure our professional development is up to date and relevant? And at the board governance level, we are limited, quite frankly, in doing work that will be an investment. But then, we need to hand over the reins to our staff and to our principals and to our teachers. And really, hopefully, they will do the work that we need them to do in investing in their own professional development and implementing the curriculum with fidelity and really investing in their own students. So, I mean, our work, I feel like we have done a good job at our board governance level. And at a certain point, we do need to hand over the reins. And I feel like that's happening this year, especially in literacy. So, that's at least how I'm approaching it. And I know when I looked at the results, one of the questions I asked Dr. Funk, because I always go through, does this change, does he see this changing either the pony plan, the strategic plan, or budget priorities? You know, is, is what he's seeing in his mind causing us to have a change in, in, in maybe a different discussion in those? Because those are the three areas I tend to focus on, just speaking for myself. And I think that, I, I mean, I think we are seeing progress. It differs definitely by building and by, like, a subgroup, which is something that's a national problem and a statewide problem for sure. And I know you said kind of stay the course, that you feel comfortable that it's, you know, we're not where we want to be, but we're making progress.
I'll kind of reiterate what I said here a few minutes ago. We have a literacy curriculum that was not necessarily aligned to the standards. And through focused professional development, we are, and now the adoption of a new literacy plan or curriculum, we have been trending slightly in the right direction, I mean, more so than, than the other districts in the metro. Having said that, okay, we can still be doing a lot better, I think. And so, you've had an opportunity as a board to hear from most of our elementary principals, and you've got to hear the different lenses, how they see, see things in their buildings. And I think it's our opportunity as a, as a district, how do we support the principals so that we've got really uniform expectations in all the buildings as far as here's what we're doing with, with our curriculum? You know, it's an interesting concept, and if you, some of you've heard me say this before, but it's something, I've, I've heard a speaker said this a number of years ago. It's defined autonomy. It's not complete autonomy. You don't get to go in your room and do what you want to do. It's defined. And so, the autonomy is, here's the curriculum, and there's an art and science of teaching, and the curriculum is the science. But as a teacher, you're the artist to try and figure out how this best meets the needs of your kids. And so, our role, I think, is to provide the support and the resources as a, as a administration and school board to our staff and the guidance and the vision so that they can, they can practice their art to the best of their ability.
And thank you. That was incredibly helpful for me personally, so I really appreciate this discussion. One area that I struggle with a little bit is accountability. If there is a gap in perform, in, in, in school growth or in population growth in an area, do we as a board have a role in accountability to help make sure that, I guess, how do we see that part as a board?
I mean, you, you represent the community, and I think our community's expectation is at a baseline, okay, we want our kids to be able to read, to be able to do math. And, okay, so, what are, as the, as the elected representatives of our community, all right, what's our role as, as a board, your role, in ensuring that we have the resources, the tools necessary, and the tools necessary to do this? And, you know, again, I'll go back to what I said a few minutes ago. I don't think the board had this level of discussion about data. We didn't used to do this. And so, just by having this open, frank, pretty honest discussion on where we're on where we're at from, at the district level, I think that that helps me help our staff because the staff knows, hey, this is important to our school board, and it's important to our community. We're being very open about this. So I think having these discussions around this table, just, I mean, it's not necessarily governance, but I mean, I think it's just helpful of providing focus and direction.
And the transparency on where we are. And, I mean, I think, I forget the phrase you used, Dr. Funk, because where I think growth is good, no one's satisfied with these numbers. I mean, you don't look at and say, 56.
Please, but not satisfied.
Yeah, please, but not satisfied. I feel like the trend is in the right direction, but anyone, you know, it's always a struggle with me as a director, because we want to celebrate the growth, right? But then also, we're looking at numbers that are not near where we would all personally want them to be. So it's, but it doesn't change overnight. And I feel like the constant investment in, like you said, in the professional development and the curriculum, I think in the past, our district has not really prioritized curriculum. And I think that where we are right now is a reflection of that, in addition to professional development as well. I do, I do personally, when I look at individual buildings and the disparity, that was kind of something that I struggled with in looking at these results. And I know that that's not my role, and that that's something you all are probably looking at in terms of what, you know, are there reasons that we can point to, to say, why is, are certain buildings overperforming or underperforming, and what can we do to support the staff and the building leadership in those areas? And I would love to, you know, once you kind of digest all this and get going in your year and look at other assessments, because this is just one. This is one assessment, and it doesn't really measure growth. It's proficiency. And there's a bit, and growth is, in my mind, just as important, because you're not gonna get to proficient if you're below grade level in the multi-tiered systems of supports that we have.
Just another, you know, answer to your question. And we'll talk it around this, professional development, as the chair mentioned. So, talking about at the board level, what we're doing to support. So two years ago, last year, we adopted a new calendar. And in that calendar, we added four days of professional development throughout the school year. So we went to a total of seven days of PD. We didn't have that before. We were doing something else with those four days. So that was a decision that was made at the board level when they approved the calendar. And we still have those days. And so that is helping us, okay? At a governance level, we understand professionalism is important. So therefore, we are gonna dedicate more time here. The other thing we did from a strategic angle is you approved the hiring of a professional, professional development lead, Stephen Gordy, last year. We didn't have anybody in that role before. So he really orchestrates and aligns the PD, working with the teaching and learning department, to best align our PD to the needs of the staff. So again, those aren't, there's things that we don't think about very often, but those were decisions that had to be made at the board level based upon recommendations we brought to you. But that was intentional to support our teachers. So those are, that's a kind of one example.
Appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
I, oh, what's, really quick, I just had this question for you, Elsa. When you picked the comparables districts, was a per pupil funding or funding included in that, or was that strictly like size, demographic makeup?
It was strictly size and demographic.
Okay. It would be interesting to look at a per pupil, like, a funding structure in those. I don't know, but just a thought.
Just really quickly, on the, and I know these are just both persistent and nationwide, but if we are expecting to see scores continue to rise with the curriculum changes and other systemic changes being made, are we, would we also expect to see the gaps? I'm looking free and reduced lunch, English learners, none. Those are just so wide. I mean, would we expect to see those start to close?
The concept is, you know, we want to raise, what is it, raise the boats, raise, you know, for everybody. And I think one of the things I think we used to try to do here is, okay, we're gonna focus on this subgroup or this or this, all right? But if we're providing a baseline education for everybody, and we are doing our proper interventions for those who need extra help, everybody should be going up, and the gap should be closing. And that's really our approach to it, as opposed to just, okay, we're gonna target this subgroup of people because they're behind. It's, no, we should be everybody.
That makes sense.
Any other questions?
Appreciate the discussion. Can I just ask, and I'm sure this is on our calendar, and I just don't have it in front of me, when do we talk FastBridge again for the fall? Do we have that?
I believe in the winter. I can't remember if it's January or February.
Yeah, sometime, probably February is what I'm thinking.
Okay, perfect. Just so we're, I know when the next time we're seeing assessments would be. Great. Well, thank you for that discussion, board, and feel free to follow up with Superintendent Funk with more questions, if you have any after you can review.
All right. Thank you, Elsa. Appreciate that. All right, now we're gonna move into closed session. The next item on our agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D.03B. The governing body of a public employer may, by a majority vote in a public meeting, decide to hold a closed meeting to consider strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategies or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals conducted pursuant to sections 179A, .01 to 179A, .25. I will go ahead and make the motion to move to closed session. Can I get a second? Parker with the second. All those in favor of moving to closed session? Do we have to do a roll call for this to go to closed?
Yeah, Andrew's gonna be in it.
Okay. Let's do a roll call then, Joan, for going to closed session.
Director Grusprich?
Yes.
Director Hucker?
Yes.
Director Kelsenberg?
Yes.
Director Lauer?
Yes.
Director Parker?
Yes.
Director Thielander?
Yes.
And Chair Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carried seven off.
Well, adjourn to closed session.